Isn't a good thing, but at least we're providing the services that we need to have for our people. In addition to that, and along with that, then also creates other issues related to social services. Our home placement continue to be extremely bad. It puts demands on our staff. I know in our child protection services, we're seeing a continuation of people moving on because of the stress of those positions. And I know Rhonda and her department there really struggle with that, and we certainly hope that we can get those things turned around. Our Veteran Service Office continues to do an amazing job on behalf of Clay County. We hear about it all the time. I heard about it again just this weekend, as a matter of fact, how well that service is doing. Our county highway department continues to meet the needs of all of our, both our county roads and our township roads. We do contract with our townships as well, and we provide coverage to over 1,600 miles of road maintenance in the county. Moving on to the buildings and grounds, Joe, and Georgia this year have had a lot of challenges, both with our new construction, keeping our buildings heated and cooled, and it's warm in here today to me. And then also, they're working very hard on finding new locations for probation and juvenile administration with the proposed expansion, or the anticipated expansion that we're going to be doing in the juvenile center. As you know, this year, the state of Minnesota created a buffer zone, and I know Commissioners Mojo and Gross have been working together with our watershed districts in establishing a decent ordinance that can be acceptable for our landowners and meet the requirements of the state of Minnesota. Our landfill and highway department, you know, Kirk's been busy with the landfill and all of those things, and this year, we did move into a new joint facility. If you haven't seen that out there, we have a joint facility with the solid waste department at the landfill, as well as our, we combined a couple of highway facilities into one, and that has also served very well to date. The Recorder's Office continues to streamline their filing systems, and the personnel continue to do more without less staff, and that's always appreciative by all of us. Our Assessor's Office has worked with new software to be able to do a more thorough job of assessing properties in our county, and through that process, we're seeing a little bit of spikes by certain types of property owners, and that's probably because of the, it's a one-time deal, and we did hear about that even through our truth and taxation hearing recently. Our Treasurer's Office continues to work hard, not only do they collect all the bills, but they receive all of the money and pay all the bills on time for us. And Lori, Lori and her staff should congratulate, every year, they get a top-notch report from the state auditor through our state audit, and we're very appreciative to the work that they do. As we move into HR, HR has seen demands rise considerably. Again, when you look at certain areas, whether it's public health nurses, or the turnover that we have in our child protection areas, that puts a lot of demands onto our HR department, and we thank them for what they do there. They just went through an open enrollment period, and there was a lot of proposed changes to insurance and all those types of things, and to properly get that information out to our employees is critical, and we thank them for their efforts. Our technology and information services continue to be an integral part of what we do. Every day, everything that you do has something to do with technology, and if it, you know, so certainly Tim Dent and his staff, and Mark Sloan and the GIS side continue to make us a top-notch area. Our county attorney's office has recently saw a remodel down there, and again, thanks to Joe and the staff for being a good part of that, and the law library. The county attorney's office, from our standpoint, they guide us on our decision-makings and make sure our policies meet the laws of the state, and so it's an ongoing effort. And keep in mind, when we, I'll be talking about our jail facility in a minute, but when you have overcrowding of your jails, and you have overcrowding of your juvenile centers, that tells you that the courts and the attorneys also have to be busy, and they've done it remarkably well with very little increase in their staff. So, thank you to them. Then moving on to probably what's most visible to everybody today, that we see every day, and you folks have had to deal with, or when I say you folks, I mean our county employees have had to do with on a regular basis, is the inconvenience of construction. And right now, we have, as you look out our windows, we have the two major projects going on, our law enforcement center and our correctional facility. Our law enforcement center is slated to be ready to be moved into, probably, hopefully, by late June or early July is still our goal, and we're staying on track with that and on budget, and we're very thankful to that. The correctional facility is a two-phase project. The first phase, we're anticipating being, the keys turned over to us maybe as early as the end of July or August, but then we have to have a six-to-eight week period of time where our staff can go in there and make sure that all of our correctional officers are properly trained. Keep in mind, we're going to be going from an old linear-style jail to a new style of jail that's going to require a totally different way of operations within there. So, they're basically rewriting a handbook, which leads me into the transitional team. We have a transition team that's been working on that for the last year, and it just takes that long to do that, and we're thankful for the work that they're doing. They're going to be setting the stage for how that thing is operated into the future. We cannot go without talking about the correctional facility under the direction of the sheriff and support of financial by our county and our county commissioners. We have been having to place from anywhere from 70, and I think I've even heard up to as many as 90 inmates a day in facilities outside of our county, and that hopefully will change now when Phase One is completed. So, we're looking at moving inmates in in September of 2018. And I do want to touch on the behavioral health component of that. We have strived very hard. We've established a behavioral health committee, and with two of our commissioners on that as well, and it's been with the idea in mind to, when these inmates come in, so that they can be set on a path forward which will hopefully not lead them to continually coming back in and being a resident of our correctional facility. Having said that, about our adult populations that we have in our facility, we also have extremely high demands in our juvenile center as well. Our juvenile center has two components, both a secure and a non-secure. The secure portion is actually an 11-county group that we have that runs that and funds that. And it's that secure portion, actually, we're looking at in 2018, I think we're just wrapping up with the details behind that. We're looking at an expansion of that facility. Our 11-county members have all voted to support the additional funding needed to do that, and it would be good for us to say thank you to Cass County, who is going to be bringing in $2.5 million towards that project, and that we are going to go from a 33-bed secure facility to a 65-bed facility. Our goal as commissioners and those of Stephen is to have it a zero-capacity facility, but unfortunately, there's things that go on that require this to happen. Those kids in those facilities are all well-educated while they're there. They receive their curriculum from the Moore Public School System, and Stephen, thank you, and to your staff for all the work that you've done in that area as well. It would also be good to talk a little bit about other things. The FM diversion has been a thing that our county board has supported, and the recent developments, there was a, because of a federal judge's ruling that stalled that project, there was a, governors put together a task force, and Commissioner Mojo from our board was served on that task force, and we believe that through the work of that group, there will be adjustments that can be made to that project to see it still go through. So, we're going to continue to work on that in 2018, and hopefully see that ultimately become a reality for the 200,000 people who depend on it. In 2018, in addition to opening the LEC and the correctional facility, we are also looking at forming a new land management office, which would combine some of the services into one area. Tim Magnuson and his planning department would work probably more closely with the Assessor's Office, and doing that would make it better accessible for our constituents and citizens who come in to ask for work done. So, we're looking forward to, through the efforts of our administrator, Brian Berg, on that, we're looking forward to bringing something to this board that will see that, those changes being made. And in closing, this year, success could not be accomplished without the support and dedication of all five commissioners. We are the policymakers, the final decision-makers, and the buffer zone between the departments and the citizens. A hearty thank you goes to my colleagues for their support, and on behalf of our board, I would like to extend a sincere thank you to our citizens who have placed their trust in us to govern the many programs which we have discussed today. Our board's genuine thank you is also given to our departments and the many employees who complete the day-to-day tasks which serve the needs of our citizens. Our board is committed to the delivery of services in an efficient, cost-effective, and professional manner. Please feel free to contact any commissioner or county administrator if you have any comments, and I wish you all the best in 2018. Thank you. All right, so with that, we will get into the election of our 2018 chair and vice chair, and I will open up nominations for chair.
I'll nominate Commissioner Mojo.
Okay, nominations, and a second, and with that, nominations will close. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. We're going to take 10 seconds and do a little shifting, and Commissioner Mojo will now take over his chair.
All of us?
Yeah. I could have just gone there and got a bit.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you for your leadership in the last year. We will now open up nominations for vice chair.
Remove Commissioner Wayland as vice chair.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anything else? We'll close the nominations. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations, Commissioner Wayland. We'll move into the citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens that wish to address this board today? No? We move into the payment of bills and vouchers.
Move approval.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any other comments, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the minutes of December 12, 2017?
Move to approve.
A motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Any other comments, questions, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Now, we'll move into our employee recognitions. All right. All right, so Commissioner Kevin Campbell, 15 years.
On behalf of the entire board, we want to extend our appreciation for your leadership and teamwork over the past 15 years. Your service to Clay County has been very valued, and we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Our next appreciation award goes to Sheriff Bill Burquist. Sheriff, in grateful recognition of 15 years of service to Clay County and its citizens, and really Cass County, and we've dealt a lot over there as well, we are really appreciative of all the service that you've provided, so thank you very much. Daniel Heising? Daniel, this plaque is given to you in grateful recognition of 15 years as well of service and dedication to our citizens, so thank you very much. Julie, want to come up and say a word?
Excuse me, I'm cold, so I can't talk very well, but I just want to say thank you, Dan, for the great use of service you've done for Clay County. Dan's worn and ready hats in our jail. He's been a head-toel trainer for us. He's been use of force, and I know he has the daunting task of being an overcrowding officer. The stress on his shoulders is overwhelming, and he's done a great job, and we really do appreciate it, so thank you, Dan.
Larry Henry. Lawrence. Larry, this is given to you today in grateful recognition for your 25 years of service to Clay County and its citizens. Thank you very much for what you do. Kirk, would you like to come up?
Thank you very much, Larry. I only worked with you for three or four years, but that's okay. But Larry, I really appreciate everything you've done out there. You have a really, really tough job. You're trying to deal with neighbors. You're trying to deal with people that are upset when you shut the landfill down because of wind. You're upset, or you deal with neighbors that are upset because the landfill is open when it's windy. You have regulatory people that you have to deal with. You have me you have to deal with. You have county commissioners you have to deal with. Really difficult job, and you've done a really good job, and I really appreciate it. I don't know if you all know this or not, but Larry's planning on retiring sometime in March or April. He's going to leave a big hole out there in the solid waste park. I think they're going to miss him a lot. So, thank you for your service on the floor. It's been a pleasure. Thanks.
Karen Hallam.
Karen, this plaque is given to you in grateful recognition of your 25 years of service and dedication to Clay County and its citizens. Thank you very much for your work.
I just want to thank Karen for all her hard work, working with childcare providers on getting licensed and maintaining their license, working with the licensing unit on providing training for all the providers, and working with community agencies on talking about issues with childcare and our need for more childcare homes. So, thanks, Karen.
Thank you very much, everyone. Now, we'll move into our establishment of our board commission meeting schedule for 2018. Currently, we're meeting on the first four Tuesdays of the month at the courthouse at 8:30. There are no regular meetings on the fifth Tuesday of the month. Is there any discussion in regards to this?
I would move it remains the same.
We have a motion to keep the current schedule as is.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, a motion signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Moving into our designation of newspaper, our official newspaper. Do you want separate motions on all of these?
Madam Chair, they are on one resolution, so I think one resolution. Well, they are separate resolutions. I'm sorry.
Yep.
Yes, please.
All right, Resolution 2018-1 is designating the Clay County Union.
Make a motion to approve them.
A motion to approve, second by Grant Wayland. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Second Resolution 2018-02.
Remove approval. Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 2018-3.
Move approval.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 2018-04. We have a motion to approve? Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion's pass. Moving into our committee assignments, you all have the sheet of the 2017 and... I had four resolutions.
Okay, oh, that's what, okay.
Got it? We're clear? Nope, that's right. Okay. All right, moving into our committee assignments for 2017, and Colleen, I will note just to move the personnel issues, which is chair and vice chair, and then the other one is, there's one other that's chair and vice chair.
Audit investment.
Audit investment. Move that over to the current chair and past chair, and chair and vice chair. I know one comment we'd had during the year was to add the small cities meetings to our per diem appointment meetings, since we do the township officer ones as well. Does that sound good?
Yes.
Okay. Frank, are there any, anything that you'd like to change or modify on yours?
No, the two that, I was going to go off, you already mentioned those, the audit. Personnel issues, I already got that. My other question was on the Veteran Service Advisory. Do we have an alternate for that, or do we, I know you're on that.
We haven't had a meeting.
Oh, you don't have it?
Well, yeah, we probably need to talk to Kirk about that, because since he took over, we haven't had a meeting of an advisory committee, but we probably should, so, yeah, we could, probably should have an alternate on that anyway, so.
I mean, if you don't mean it's not necessary, but I just thought we needed an alternate. I mean, service and alternate.
Do we need a motion to add an alternate?
Not at this time. Let's move him around and then, Madam Chair.
Is that something that you'd be interested in?
I'd be interested.
Okay. Make that note. Everything else on yours, Commissioner?
Yes, I'm fine with everything.
Commissioner Wayland, anything on yours that you'd like to modify?
About the old Port Gillian Powers, Kevin, we haven't had a meeting in that now for a couple of years, so.
Technically, it's still there, because there's still, there's still what they refer to that Track 3, which is an area up along Highway 75. So, it technically needs to stay there, but the likelihood of there being a meeting is very remote, so.
So, just leave it on there.
It stays on there, but pretty much inactive. Until the Joint Powers Board is formally dissolved, then.
Anything else?
I don't think so. I was going to recommend, too, that we add to the bottom the small cities meetings that we have.
All right. Commissioner Campbell, are there anything on yours you'd like to modify?
I was just going to mention the same thing regarding that Port 1. It's really not active, but it has to stay on there, I guess. The MinDOT variance committee, I believe I received a letter on that stating that I would no longer be on that, but I, maybe we better get clarification to be sure. Most of that is something that's done via email conversation, so. All the rest of these things, I'm still pretty actively involved in, so.
Moving into mine, if possible, I'd like to move the joint powers with the county, city, schools, and township to Commissioner Haney. That conflicts with a prior engagement that I have. If that works for you, Commissioner Haney?
Works fine.
Okay. And then, if you'd also, I have another meeting at this time, the Historical and Cultural Society alternate, if you'd like that as well?
I would.
Okay, then we'll take those both and move those to you. Doesn't make sense to be on two if you're on conflicting times.
So, which one was it, historical?
I'm just the alternate on that.
Okay, yeah.
And then the other thing, Colleen, if you could add to mine, I'm also on the Buffalo Red River Advisory Board for that watershed. I think Commissioner Gross is on the advisory board for the Wild Rice, so.
Yeah, I serve as the alternate for the Buffalo Red.
Right, that's the watershed, but that's the advisory board.
Oh, I see, okay.
All right, Commissioner Haney?
I guess I'm adding in the joint powers and the alternate to the Historical Society.
I had one more I was going to bring up. So, the Northwest Emergency Communication and Radio Board, I was wondering if maybe Commissioner Haney wanted, sometimes we have conflicts. I know you usually can't go to that either. You're the alternate, so if you wanted to be the primary on that, and I could be the alternate, you know, why is that all?
Okay, so make Commissioner Haney the main on the Northwest Emergency Communications Board, and currently Commissioner Campbell's the vice, and we'll move Commissioner Wayland to vice. Or alternate, sorry.
Because they meet, Jim, on, you know, sometimes ITV and sometimes in Thief River, so just, you know, it varies.
What, was it first place?
ITV.
ITV, yeah, just, they set it up here, so a lot of the time, so. But when, it's on usually on a Wednesday, and a lot of times, we have diversion issues or other things going on, so I'll be the alternate and make it when I can.
Not a problem.
I think Kevin's the alternate now, right?
Yeah, Kevin's.
Yeah, I described Crossmeath as the alternate.
Anything else that may be missing from this? I know we've added a few over the last year, and I think even dropped a couple, so it's kind of a fluid document. Not? Any other comments?
I think maybe they can just doctor this up, and we can give it one last review.
All right, we'll wait for a motion on that. Can we put it on the agenda for next week, Brian, and then we'll finalize that probably? Thank you very much. We are a little ahead of schedule. We are a little ahead of schedule, and is it possible, I think our committee assignment, our committee reports will go quickly, but can you fill in some of those? Commissioner Campbell, are you ready for that?
I can look here, I do not believe I have anything to report over the, often between Christmas and New Years, this, no, there, I do not have any report, but I will say that I had an opportunity to go on a tour of our two facilities, and it's really, really making a lot of good progress internally. When you start seeing them starting to paint and lay tile over at the law enforcement center, you know it's moving along in the right direction, so, so that's, I have no other reports.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Haney?
I have no report.
Okay, Commissioner Gross?
I have one meeting that we held on the homeless, that we're trying to find a different place for the homeless, I just, I know there was two meetings, I think, last week, and I wasn't able to make the second one, you know. The first one, there was just, I think I counted around 30 people there, that meeting that were concerned about the homeless people in our area, and trying to come up with different places to, to house them, you know, the armory was put in as an emergency place, and they said that as of January the 3rd, I think, they're gonna be done, they're gonna have other activities there that they can't be emergency anymore. So, I don't know, they came up, I'll have to go to you on that one to see whether they came up with another place, 'cause there's some churches that are building some stuff, but they're not meeting up to fire code and stuff like that. I guess my thought of that, when I, when they were talking about that, they weren't up to fire code to house people and stuff like that, and I was wondering sometimes about these churches that house people every Sunday morning, they house three hundred, two, three hundred people in their building, but they're not certified to house homeless people, but I was just wondering what the standards are on some of those, but just give you some cause of concern, you know, how we do this, you know, whether we should bring the common sense thing into some of this area, and I, and not that I'm trying to go against fire codes, I know we need them, and know it's a requirement, but when we're trying to house the homeless, what is better than, than to tell them to go out to a bus shelter somewhere and sleep on a piece of cardboard or, or to house them, it's just, I think it's a serious situation, and I think we need to come up, and we may have to use some common sense in trying to house these people somewhere. And, but I think it's a very important thing, I'm glad that there was a committee involved in trying to get this, this thing settled on a temporary basis, so, that's the only meeting I have.
Okay, Commissioner Whelan?
I had no meetings last week, I did go also on a tour of the law enforcement center and the jail, and both very impressive, and it's nice to see everything on schedule, and yeah, they're making incredible progress, so I think we'll be hoping early summer when we plan on it, so it's good news.
Good. Thank you. Last week, I also attended that meeting just to expand maybe on Commissioner Gross's statements. Part of the reason that came together is that when Governor Dayton signed that emergency order to open the armory, there was some staffing and communication lapses between the different homeless organizations in town, and so it was to collaborate how they were going to staff the pre-screened people that came into that, and, you know, unfortunately, I think that's a conversation that we probably should have collectively had before the end of December. We came up with something that worked, but I think going forward, there needs to be more of a dialogue, and I think we've got several, you know, there's a homeless initiative in, within someone's assignments, I think, and I think we just need to continue to have that collaboration, because there are agencies that do offer that. We tend to offer the emergency services that kind of where the gap is, but I think it's not a conversation that's done, it's not a conversation that is gonna go away, and I think it's, we just need to be aware of it. That was, you know, the rest of my meetings from last week. Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, I'd like to add on that, and I know this was all started after the governor had, at the request of the mayor, had opened up the facility, and I was gonna attend that meeting as well, but it was with three of us there, we couldn't do that, so I did not go, but I, I would have had several questions to solve the problem, because I can't imagine that, that this is just a Moorhead problem in Clay County, and so, so what, you know, what are discussions and what's being done with somebody who might be in the same predicament in Barnesville or in Holly, and so I think there needs to be some dialogue too about outside there. I don't know if, if typically under those conditions right now, if somebody's picked up, if they're brought here, because this is a central location, or what, but I do have those concerned and, concerns, and I was, I did notice right after that, that I don't get to watch a lot of television, but I did see some evening commercials where they were putting a call out for volunteers to work up at the armory, so...
I think that was really a result from that meeting.
Yeah, yeah, and I raised that as, you know, that something positive came out of there, and hopefully they did get the volunteers, but they certainly had a public call for them, so...
I do have to add that it wasn't just Clay County, Cass County was well represented at this meeting, and they had several different people there from different agencies, Florida Raid, I mean, they had quite a few, they had representation, they had done a lot more, in fact, they probably housed more people than we do, so...
Oh, sure, yeah, I'm sure they do, yeah.
Alright. Brian, would you like to cover any meetings that you had last week?
Sure, Madam Chair. The, it's already been talked about, the construction tour, that was really valuable, I hadn't been in there for quite a while either, and lots of progress being made. And the homeless shelter did take up quite a bit of time, and I think we had either three or four meetings, because we had some internal meetings too, and putting together some realistic lists of emergency shelters. Now, the Fargo-Moorhead area does have space for about 277 beds for homeless, which, which surprised me, but they were looking for an emergency shelter that could house up to 40, and frankly, as a result of getting together and talking about this, each of the entities, the City of Fargo, City of Moorhead, Cass, and Clay County, Dilworth, and Glendon actually have suggested locations of emergency shelters that could be made available for short periods of time, and some even up to a longer period of time, as, as late as April 1st. And City of Fargo has the basement of the Civic Center, which would probably be the number one location that we would go to for emergency shelters, but if and when this would be, for example, Clay County, we talked about there, we could possibly house seven people up at the, there's a small conference room up at the motor vehicle office that we had finished off when we did that. We looked at the Family Center, Service Center, the chapel, where you guys all are aware of that area, that could house up to 15 people, we'd have to make some arrangements, but in, and it would have to be for a week or two or three, but it'd have to be, you know, a short-term basis, we couldn't for a long-term. Highway Department, in talking with Dave, we feel their training room, that they could spare that for a week or two if the need was there, and that could be for 10 to 15 people. So, every jurisdiction went through that kind of a list, and I know Commissioner Gross talked about the Dilworth Community Center, and Mayor Chad Olson was there at our last, second to the last meeting to talk about the availability of that, and he was certainly supportive of that, and wanted to talk to the city council about that, so. So, the point being, there's, there's a long now list of backup facilities, and I guess what I would look to you folks for consensus, I don't think it needs an official vote, but if push comes to shove, and our emergency manager feels that we need to make some space, I'm assuming that that would be okay for you on a short-term basis, if we make notification to you, and...
Yeah, I certainly think that that would be good, I, you know, obviously there's, you get into some areas where you just have to make sure that, you know, where they have access to and where they don't.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, that's...
Yeah, yeah, and they need bathroom facilities, and we have to coordinate that off, and that would be a little difficult in, in the Family Service Center, 'cause the bathrooms have to come down the hallway into the end, but we'd have to work something out.
I think part of the thing to note too is that the agencies are hiring external security, so that when there are these shelters, there are hired security present. Also, the people that will be using these shelters will only be allowed in from, I don't know if it's eight to eight, they're screened at a prior location and then brought to that location, and if they choose to leave after 10 o'clock or close time to that, that's it, they're not allowed back in. So, I think security and obviously liability was a question that different people had, but I think it was the consensus that if there's a space, and it's going to be secure, and the security is present, that we should at least try to allow it. Did you have a further comment?
I, I just, I know that there was, I know they were talking about our saviors within church in Moorhead, and some, some of them were saying that they would have, have room for just women or what have you, so, so I would imagine we're gonna have to distinguish amongst all of these different locations, which ones are gonna be for which, are there gonna be any, that are gonna be co, you know, who knows what, you know?
Part of the staffing equation is that there needs to be a ratio, and I think part of the initial problem at the armory was that there wasn't a female screened volunteer that would be present, so they weren't allowing women to be there. If they would have had that ability, it would have freed up single beds at shelters that families could then utilize, and I think that was the part that we all understood that the 89 children that were part of those family units that weren't being sheltered, if we could find 14 beds for just females, it would really free up family units.
And, Madam Chair, I think it's a good point to note, too, that we all looked at this as our emergency managers being involved in it, therefore incidents, and the pushback there was that they felt this was a severe incident that was occurring at this time, so that the governmental officials needed to be involved in this, and, but we made that point quite clear, that this should be something that planned out, and they assured us they've been working on this since July, and they just weren't coming up with things, but there will be more availability next year, so that we won't have this in a crisis at the last minute, because this was the 11th hour last Friday that, just before Christmas that this came up, so I think there will be much more planning, I won't say better planning, I think they've really been trying, but more planning and preparation for this, And, Madam Chair, that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. I see we will have now our annual update and funding requests from the Drug Court and Veterans Court, Don Kelsman, and Judge Lawson, welcome.
Welcome, good morning, happy new year.
Likewise.
Happy new year. Good to see you all, thanks for having us here. Cold enough out?
Not today, it's a heat wave today.
No kidding.
It's gonna get above zero.
Don has some handouts, and why he's handing those out, I just wanna take a really brief moment and toot his horn, because he won't. Don has been with our program since the beginning, he helped evolve our Veterans Court program as well, he was instrumental in that, and now recently this year, he was just appointed as a part-time position to the Seventh Judicial District Treatment Court Coordinator. So, that's his halftime job, and his other halftime, of course, is our Drug Court and Veterans Court Administrator, so we're so lucky to have him.
Congratulations.
He just is amazing for our program, so...
Thank you. Don?
I'll just start off with, as you can see in the handout, the first couple pages are just the budget information, for, the first page is the Drug Court, the second page is Veterans Court. Really, the numbers are basically the same as they've been the last couple years, so I guess I'll just highlight the only differences, which are kind of minor. The Drug Court, we now get 89,000 in state funding annually. We used to get 60,000 in state funding, and then the Seventh Judicial District made up the difference there, but the state has now gone to a formula that they use for all treatment courts in the state, and so that formula, under that formula, we got more funding, so that made up the difference of the loss of the district funding, so it, in the end, it all evened out, and we're getting the same amount of funding as before, just from different sources. And then, the same is true with the Veterans Court funding. We had a grant, a two-year grant from the state before, but that expired, but the judicial branch with this new treatment court funding formula made up the difference there, so now we're also fully funded for our Veterans Court going forward. So, basically, the funding information is all, the total amount is the same as before, it's just a slight difference in, in where we're getting money.
Don, does that state formula take into consideration local contributions?
It does not, it's basically based on number of participants in a program, so you get a certain amount of dollars from the state based on how many people are in your program.
We did really well under that state formula, and Don actually was part of the group that came up with that formula, so...
And actually, one of the things that they wanted to do was, under our, under the formula they came up with, we had been historically underfunded, so they wanted to kind of come up with a formula that took into account the courts that have local support, and that's, because they were almost getting punished, they were getting local money, so the state was giving them less, and it was like they were being punished for having local support, and so this new formula tries to even that out and make it a little more fair for every court.
Don, before you go into the participant breakdown, is there any questions on the budget for either courts?
So, it appears that the, the overall between the two, the funding is exceeding the expenses by a little bit.
A little bit.
But they, on page one, one is under and one is over a little bit?
Yeah, and, and some of that is, so, you know, the fiscal year for the judicial branch is different than some of these grant fiscal years, so we have a little overlap with some of the grant funding, so this year, we had a little bit more total, I think five or six thousand.
They can't balance each other out, though. They can't balance each other out, because they have to balance within themselves.
They have to be specific to each court, both the revenues and the expenses.
They do, and we get specific funding that's targeted, and it's really important that we comply with that, so that we don't lose it, so...
Any other questions on the budget?
I was just going, the funding you receive from Clay County Commission and Becker County Commission, what is, is that just part of the, is that out of our budget item, or is that just a, I mean, I know the Clay County Commission has a line item, does that come out of that line item, is that, was that a separate line?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gross, they are put into the county attorney's office, but then they are just past funds.
Oh, okay, so that's just from the Clay County?
They come out of general funds.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, and the reason that Clay County is double what Becker County is, the way that our court is set up, it's set up for 20 participants out of Clay and 10 out of Becker, and so that money balances.
Right. Okay, would you like to move into the participants?
Sure. So, you can see our numbers for Drug Court, currently we have 17 participants, which is lower than our average, it does kind of fluctuate from year to year, I'd say it's anywhere from 15 to 26 we've had at any given time. So, this is a little on the low side, but we are screening a few people, we're in the process of screening, so I think we'll take in a few more here in the next few weeks. You can see I've just broken down a little bit by what phase of the program they're in and demographics. We've, we're up to 80 graduates now total that we've had since we started the program, and you can see that of those 80, 79 were employed at the time they graduated, the other was a student. 39 obtained their driver's licenses while in their, while they were in the program. They were all required to be current on their child support payments, and all were, and they were clean and sober for over a year when they graduated. They completed a community service project of at least 50 hours at graduation, most of them, it was more than 50, but it was a minimum of 50 hours. And we've had 19 graduates that have reoffended since they graduated, so that's about a 24% recidivism rate, but the national studies show that for people that aren't in treatment courts, five years out, the recidivism rates are 50 to 60%, so you can see that's, you know...
Commissioner Campbell?
I actually look at that as three out of four were successful.
I like that.
That's a good thing, that's, that was our goal from the beginning, we never dreamed we could get them all, but, but to think that through this process and this investment, three out of every four that go through this, we haven't seen back, that's pretty darn good.
It's amazing.
Thank you.
It really is amazing.
Yeah.
Thank you. We have a great team, and our team is really, it's astounding.
Yeah.
And then just the last page is the Veterans Court data. That program is still pretty new, so our numbers there aren't as high. We've only got seven participants currently. But one of the things we saw, actually, the amount of veterans that are coming into the criminal justice system with felonies or gross misdemeanors in Clay County and Becker County is way down than what it was four years ago and five years ago. So the numbers aren't what they were. That's a big reason why our participants aren't as high as we had planned originally. But we've had one graduate so far in the program. And of our current seven participants, I believe four of them are in the final phase. So we're expecting to have some more graduations this year in Veterans Court. So far, I think in overall in both programs, we're continuing to see good success. And I want to thank you guys for the support you've given us every year. We couldn't have done this without you, and I think the program's making a real difference. So thank you very much.
And whenever I'm talking to others in other areas that do treatment courts, that's one of the things I love to brag about, is the great support that we get locally. And the way that that's illustrated is, our county boards give us money. And not a lot of people can say that in their treatment court programs. So, I mean, really, that is truly appreciated, and it's unique. And so pat yourselves on the back.
Yeah.
Don, do you track, when you have a veteran that goes through this process, the time that they were in service and where they were? And what I'm getting is, was it Vietnam era? Was it Desert Storm era? You know, I remember it wasn't too long ago that we had our National Guard troops come back. We had a lot of National Guard troops in the FM area that were gone, and they came back. And we were actually told before they came back, we were given some advice on how to assist them in ways, and what you should say to them and what you shouldn't say to them because of their, you know, situation. But I'm just curious if there's any one era that has a higher demand?
I don't know that I've really seen any one specific era. That information is in their files. I haven't compiled it all.
Okay.
And I put it together for a total, but I'd say most of them are probably recent.
Yeah.
More recent?
Our demographics definitely aren't Vietnam era.
Okay. So it's younger?
Younger. I would say, and I'm just going to pull a number out of the air, but most of our participants are under forty-five. We may have one that's older than that.
Okay.
So.
I know specifically, when we go to our Association Minnesota Counties meetings, and these courts come up, it's often something that it is kind of, counties are striving for. And it's, for us, great to see the success that you have had. And in terms of dollars spent for us, it is clearly worth our money in terms of how we are spending, spending it to make a difference. And so it's a pride thing for us as well to hear that Clay County's doing a great job with this. So one, thank you for what you guys are doing, but thank you for including us as well. Several of us have attended those graduations, and they're really quite powerful. So thank you.
Powerful is a good word to describe them. And that invitation is always out there, will always notify you. I don't think Frank's missed one yet. So you just come for the cake.
Yeah.
I like the pizza, too.
Yeah.
A lot of times, we measure this stuff by how much we're spending, you know, this. But, you know, there should be another figure in how much are we saving, you know, by not having to house these people in jail every day, you know? So I think that should be another line item, you know, how much did we save by doing this program? So not how much did we spend on it.
Yeah. And hearing you guys, when you talk about it, refer to it as an investment, really warms my heart, because that's exactly what it is. And it just goes to show how educated you all are in those types of programs to have referred to it that way.
This is, in a way, you know, it's a different type of a situation where somebody needs help. This happens to be somebody who's served for our country, but they still run into issues. And it can have even larger impacts. That person could be in serious trouble with the law, and could have family. And that family, as a result, could end up being put into situations where they then also have to be served by our social services and so on and so forth. So anytime that we can correct, get them on to a path of being productive citizens again, it's, that goes to exactly what Commissioner Gross is talking about. The savings component of this is a large, way larger than you see on paper.
And the ripple effect, whether it's Veterans Court or Drug Court, is.
Absolutely.
Any other comments? Well, thank you very much.
Yep. Thank you all.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. You know what? My favorite part of the meeting always was when you all got up and switched chairs. I missed that this morning, but your name tags are in the wrong spot. Take care.
Yes, likewise.
Take a shot, Dick.
Lieutenant Green and Lieutenant Empting, are you ready? Just a quick comment before you start your piece. Thank you for your involvement in facilitating, taking the discussion last week in terms of homeless and emergency reactions. Thank you for your presence there.
Yes.
You're welcome. Also, I can give you a little bit of update on it.
Yeah, that's fine.
I guess Mark wants to do the vehicles first.
You can go on.
Okay. I did stop by there this morning at the Armory. There's still being housed at the Armory. They average like twenty-one to twenty-two people over the weekend. They do have females there. Last weekend, or last Friday, we decided on a committee on that they're going to look at the Civic Center over at Fargo. They've already been over there. Now they still have to make an agreement, and hopefully I'll be today. And then by Thursday, they will be moving over there. Second alternate is the DeWorth Community Center. And after this, we're going over there with Chers, you ought to just take a look at it.
Okay.
And then the third alternate will be the Glendon Community Center.
Okay. Great. Well, thank you very much. Keep us posted as to what you need from us. All right. Proposal for 2018 vehicle replacements?
Squad cars, yes. Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Thanks for having us this morning. Obviously, Happy New Year as well. Obviously, that time again for 2018 squad cars to be ordered, as you can see in front of the agenda, that we're looking to replace eight current squad cars that we have with eight others. This would come out of the Internal Service. There is funds in Internal Service for this, who would ultimately be in the black here. Very close to zero, to be honest with you. Closer than I think we have been in other years, to my understanding. The one thing I did not have in the estimate that I forgot about until after this was sent was the vehicle decal-ing. That's about five seventy-five a car, so that would be about another three thousand four hundred and fifty off of that Internal Service fund. So you would be in the black about thirty-three hundred dollars to go back into Internal Service. One of those cars that we are looking to sell, it sounds like Georgia Mordray would like to also purchase it from us, rather than it going to auction as well, if she's showing interest in it, and she had said that she'd like to have it, so.
Any other comments or questions from this board? Well, I think it goes to show why that Internal Service Fund was really created, to help ease the burden when these things do need to come up. And I assume this has been through your committee? There's some, some sort of?
No, it has not. I don't know that this one goes through a committee.
Yeah, I never do. The normal we don't.
Well, the dollars are there. It's the board's wishes.
Can we, do you know which one, which vehicle that Georgia's looking at?
Yeah, she's looking at the 2013 Ford Explorer. It's number two.
Number two?
And the vehicle's to be sold at auction.
Yeah, that'd be an unmarked Explorer.
It's currently assigned to the Tech Light Cars.
So, so the auction dollars, we're using the proceeds from the 2017 auction to cover these purchases. These vehicles will be in auction in 2018, and then those dollars will go into the fund for the next year, right? Just to follow that process?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
And you can tell, you know, the last few years, we've had, you know, sixty to seventy thousand dollars we gave back to the Internal Service Funds almost every year. And now we're to the point where it's, can go either way. Lucky this year that we have a little bit of money to give back, but you know how everything is increasing? Especially the expenses of the vehicles. They went up fifteen hundred dollars this year?
Yeah, each police interceptor went up one thousand dollars.
Yep.
From last year. They were roughly twenty, twenty-six something last year, twenty-six, six? And now they're up to twenty-seven, six. So the other thing that's going to make it a little bit more of a burden for us is we had the convenience of going to Forest Falls over the previous years. Now we have to go to Heming for patrol vehicles. So it gets to be a little bit of a.
To outfit or to purchase?
To purchase. To outfit, we can still go to our current vendor in Pelican Rapids.
Right. And you can look at that expense to outfit a vehicle?
Yeah.
I mean, they're averaging between ten, eleven, and twelve thousand dollars for a squad car now. And that's just the items that we need in there. We're not talking about a computer, or the camera, or any of them items. It's just to basically get, so we can get a prisoner in there and get them transported safely.
We have started, I think it was in 2016, we started putting that outfit cost into Internal Service as well, rather than having trouble finding the monies and things like that to outfit the cars. And now that's right in Internal Service, so it's going to be, it will make it a little bit easier in the future.
Okay. Any other comments?
I'm going to approve the purchase.
We have a motion to approve the purchases?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion?
I got one question.
Commissioner Gross?
Is our vehicle used going to be down at all after we have to jail here? Or is that going to make a difference on how many vehicles we need, or do we still need the same?
We'll still be needing the same. What's going to make the difference is that the transport mileage will come down somewhat, I believe. I believe that transport deputies are putting on about twelve thousand miles a month in transports right now. So those miles should come down once we get the new facility built, but we'll still need those same vehicles.
Okay.
The amount of vehicles we will need, but you're looking at, we hold them back each four years instead of three years. But now, like Mark said, it'll be less share. So now, if we look at a vehicle that we've only had three, it's supposed to hold up four, but we got a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on there, it makes sense for us to get rid of that. So again, hopefully, we'll be able to hold on to these vehicles longer.
Commissioner Campbell?
I think, too, there's some discussion that, possibly seeing if one of your larger ones can be switched over to the juvenile. Have anybody talked to you about that yet?
No, not yet.
Okay. Right, I think there was, we've had some discussions.
Yeah.
Internally about that. So maybe, you know, for planning purposes, or maybe it can be shared, maybe not necessarily turned over to the.
Maybe looking at, like a van?
Yes. Yeah. So if you could keep that in mind, that you could cooperate with them or something.
I just had a question in regards to why we're buying Ford interceptors, and then there's one Dodge Charger, and the Charger is significantly less in terms of outfitting?
Yep. The reason for the Dodge Charger is, every year, we always run into a lot of traffic complaints from citizens along County Ten, County Twenty-Six, County Two, in Clay County here. This is just a way, it's going to be an unmarked car, it's going to be a way to kind of combat some of those complaints. County Ten, as we know, like traffic, we get a lot of complaints out there from our citizens. And it's just a way to try and, try and, try and help them get some people slowed down. The car itself is going to be issued to me. It is going to be available to all the patrol to be able to use, anytime that they wish to go and do some traffic enforcement or on TCD enforcement fees. The car itself is significantly lower in cost. I, it's just, I don't know why.
The car, that's why.
It's an all-wheel drive car.
It's not SUV.
Yeah, it's an all-wheel drive car. It's got the same drivetrain that we're currently running in our SUVs, but it is less.
Yeah, remember, when we sell them on auction, though, you know, it usually averages out, we're going to get more for an SUV than we are for a car.
Right.
And the reason the outfit cost is less than that is, our outfitter in Pelican Rapids, he works with several different agencies. And wider, the police department has donated some equipment to our department for that car. They donated a cage, a center console, and some other, other equipment. They probably saved us somewhere around twenty-five hundred dollars by that donation.
Good. Well, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Julie, are you ready?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have a vacancy at the jail. This is actually one we knew about that was coming. It's a full-time vacancy. It's part of our staffing plan for the DUC, and we are requesting that we get that filled as soon as we can. Here's some cost savings, actually quite a bit, about six thousand dollars.
Six thousand?
Six, yeah, sixty-four hundred.
Was there longevity with this?
No, he's only been with us for a couple of years, but he was a part-timer for us than he was full-time.
Okay. Any questions?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Yep. Brian, are you ready for the easement?
I am.
Great.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the commission. What you have before you is a utility easement, and it's part of the construction project to do a double looping around the campus. This is an easement that was put together with the help of Mike Love from Houston Engineering. I know our highway department has reviewed the easement as well. And Jenny Marazza said this morning that she has reviewed it as well, and it's a very simple easement plan. Tell you whether it's good or bad or not, I can't tell you that. I'm relying on our experts. So I just ask for your approval so we can move this forward.
Thank you. Any questions?
Move to approve.
So a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jenny, did you have anything? We've already done our reports.
I do not. Thank you.
Colleen, do you have anything? All right. It's not.
Madam Chair, I'd like to, now that we're starting the new year, and we've got, it was brought up today about some potential retirements and so on and so forth, and I think we should put on the agenda to talk about, I brought up about a new hire freeze. And I, because we have all these projects going on, and our levy did go up considerably this last year, I think we need to look at potentially, like we've done in the past, is to discuss imposing a new hire freeze. I'm not suggesting that, when it comes to replacing, that we don't replace them, but I'm talking about new hires. It often seems that once we establish a budget, that two months later, all of a sudden, we're hearing about the need for a new employee. of a sudden, we're hearing about the need for a new employee, and it's after we've already gone through our budgeting process, and, so then we have to scramble for, for where those funds come from, so I, to avoid that coming up in the future, I think we should look at that, and I would just ask this, Brian maybe, to have that put on as a, an item to discuss.
Is that something that you want personnel issues to kind of develop a policy to bring forward to this board, or is it something?
Yeah, well, you know, and I, I think in, in the past, the way it was done, and I, and I think maybe it did go through the pick committee to begin with, but there, there just got to be so, such high demands, and we, if you look, maybe we could start by seeing a report on how many new hires we've done in the last two years, or three years, and it's been significant, and, you know, and at some point, we certainly want to provide the services to our citizens, but at some point, it also gets very costly and...
Right.
I guess if we're going to put a new hire freeze on or something like that, I'd be very concerned, because we're really going to have a turnover, this is not a turnover, but we are going to come under a new phase here, the Clay County with our jail, with the correctional, they really, I mean, I know we've got a transition team going in there already and determining what they need.
Right.
But that is tough to determine once we're in operation.
Yeah, and I, and I, but, but again, now, then this, this, I didn't get to get into the details, but when it comes to example for what you talk about with the Department of Corrections in the jail facility, they pretty much govern what our staffing has to be. So I'm not suggesting that we put a wage freeze on something that would violate us from, you know, what the Department of Corrections requires us to run our facility. That's what I'm referring to, and I'm not talking about if, if any of our current employees leave and you replace them, that, I'm not talking about a freeze on that.
No, I realize that.
You know, and, and if there, if there's, if there's something new, I certainly can understand the process that would have in place where a request could come forward.
I think what you're saying, your concern, is that we're in the process of obligating new staffing that will be required for the plans that were, for instance, the juvenile center, correct?
Well, juvenile.
I mean, at some point, because of the work that's been done, there will need to be new hires, and you're saying there's slightly a conflicted theory as to what...
I mean, there could be all kinds of things come up, you know, I don't know what it's, what it's going to, feeding facilities are, fund, anything.
That's why I want to have the discussion, and I think we can solve those problems.
You know, I just don't want to put any restrictions on them.
I think it's important, if that's our perspective, that we are more clear with administration in terms of, of filtering that before it comes to us, right? I mean, I, I don't know if you're, you're that direction for us, but if that's something that we are hesitant to even want to entertain adding additional staff that weren't already obligated, obviously, a staffing request comes to you before it comes to us, and maybe we need to give a stricter direction in terms of that. So, can we get a pick committee together to talk about that?
Yes, Miss, Madam Chair, that, that's, I guess that's what's going around in my mind, what actually do you want to cover, because currently, right now, every position, even the replacements of retiring or resignation positions come to you for your consideration, and I think you want that to continue, at least that's what I've heard, but you want to have a discussion in regards to new positions, and you bring up some very interesting points here. The jail, the new correctional facility, is going, you're going to be adding a lot of positions to that, the budgeted ones were 50, 16 positions actually for next year. The juvenile center is going to be quite a few new positions, and I think, I'm not sure of many new positions that are being added, but anyway, any new position has come to you in the past for consideration, and that's what you're talking about, correct?
Let's, let's keep in mind, though, the new positions, we established a 2018 budget already that included dollars for new, new employees for the correctional facility. So my thought process, those have been approved, they've been approved through the budgeting process, because we're, we have to have those 18 or 16, however number they are, in place in September, and if we didn't budget for it, we made a big mistake. So we have budgeted for it. What I'm referring to, or what I'm suggesting, is anything over and above what, whether, men, you know...
Juvenile.
Even the juvenile is, is still governed by DOC, and so if, if they come to us and say, you need to have two new people, and our policy says, well, we can't hire new people, well, then you have to, something has to overrule our, you know, but then they have to still give cause to do it. We've done this before. You know, it's, it's just, at, at some point, I, I see us constantly getting requests for new hires after the budgeting process has been over, and I, I'm just trying to avoid that.
Well, I think, I think you've been given some direction, and we can talk after the meeting in terms of bringing something either to a committee and then to this, to have a more in-depth conversation about it.
I think we have a pick meeting scheduled this month, Don.
Third, third Tuesday of the month.
Is that a discussion you want to have before that time?
We could, can schedule early.
We can.
We can arrange it.
Yeah. We'll get that done. Any other comments or discussion?
Just for clarity, that, that then will not be on the next month, or next week's agenda? It'll be to schedule it for the pick, to have a discussion reference.
That's, that's fine.
New hires and a process, process for that.
That's fine, I think, I just want, I just want us to have that discussion this month. Maybe the rest of the commissioners won't agree with it, but I want to have that discussion.
Okay. All right, so no, we'll put it on the next agenda. Right. If nothing else, we are adjourned.